Welcome everybody to tonight's Lamoore Planning Commission meeting. Let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Limitance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, the liberty and the right to govern.
Okay, let's go ahead and go to item number two for a roll call. Commissioner Clement.
I'm here.
Commissioner Couch.
Here.
Commissioner, how you going?
Here.
And I, Commissioner Franklin, I'm here. Moving on to item number three. Recognition of reappointment to the commission. Commissioner Bauchament, welcome back. Item number four, notification of vacancy. Our Chair Michael Day is no longer with us. He is now in Hanford. So yeah, Michael's gone. Moving on to item number five, reorganization of commissioners. What we want to do here is, I'm sorry, Christie, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Would you like for me to read the staff report or does anybody need clarification as far as the role and responsibilities of the commissioners and Chair and Vice Chair? I'd be happy to read if you would.
I'm good.
So what I'm going to do is call for nominations for Chair. If anybody would like to nominate another commissioner, then a commissioner that's not in attendance, go ahead. I open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Franklin.
Anybody else have a nomination? You can nominate yourself as well. Okay, then I'll close the nominations for Chair. And I have a motion to appoint Franklin to Chair. Commissioner Clement, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Clement.
Aye.
Couch.
Aye.
H. Glenn.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Okay, so I'll call for motion. I'll open the floor for nomination for Vice Chair. And again, you can nominate yourself.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Couch.
Are there any other nominations? With no other nominations, I'll close the floor for nominations. Is there a motion to appoint Commissioner Couch to Vice Chair?
I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Couch.
Aye.
Commissioner H. Glenn.
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin.
Aye.
Let the record show that the new Chair is Commissioner Greg Franklin and the new Vice Chair is Commissioner Mitchell Couch. And with that, everybody has to move. All right, this is.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the next item. Item number six, we're going to open it up for public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each, and it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the commission secretary for distribution to the commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda once the item has been called and the Chair opens the item to the public. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Okay, no items for public comment. Let's go ahead and move on to item number seven, approval of new meeting start time.
Your commissioners, several months ago, I set aside each commissioner and I asked them if an earlier start time would be beneficial to them as we thought that maybe beneficial to the community. They wouldn't have to be out so late and the plan, the city council meetings start early. And I had positive feedback, so we had actually agreed to change the start time, but we're, we've decided to formalize it tonight, and so we would like for a commissioner to make a motion to change the start time of the regular meetings of the planning commission to 5:30. This will be for regular meetings and special meetings unless otherwise agendized.
Okay, well, at this time, we'll allow comments from the commissioners.
Mr. Franklin, I would like to move that we change the meeting times from 7:00 PM to 5:30 PM on Craig Day.
Is there any public comment? Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second Commissioner Clement's motion.
Copy. Let's vote on that. Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner, how you going?
Aye.
Commissioner Couch.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Moving on to item number eight, public hearing. A request by Lennar Holmes to amend major site plan review 2020 Tag 01 to remove master home plan 7511 and modify elevations of the Clementine master home plan series 7512, 7514, 7515 for subdivision tract 848 and approve 362 lot single family residential subdivision to be developed in three phases with a 1.6 acre park on 54.1 acres. The project is located south of Bush and east of College Avenue in the city of Lamoore. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, this project is covered by the common sense exemption that SEQA applies only to projects that have the potential of causing a significant effect on the environment. It can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, therefore, the activity is not subject to SEQA per CA Code Regulations Title 1415061.
Good evening, Commissioner Steve Brandt, City Planner. This is an amendment to some master home plans that you previously saw when this tract 848 was approved. You had recommended approval of the home plans as well as the rest of the project and the city council agreed and approved them about a month after you saw it. So we've been working with the developer since then. There's been a lot of with the subdivision plans are approved, the final map is approved. We've, they've started grading and but with some changes in the economy and in interest rates, they have made some changes to the home plans that you saw back, back originally and in looking at those changes, Chrissy and I decided that there were enough changes that it was, it was different enough that we wanted to bring this back to you to get your reapproval on the new changes. We didn't think that we could so just do that at the staff level, so. Before there were, there were a total of nine different home plans and a lot of this goes towards the city's six pack rule, which I think, I think you, you all understand what that is. If not, I can go into more detail. The, the floor plans on the homes that they have are the same. It's the changes to the facades and the, and the details on the facades. In addition to they've, they've removed one of the home plans that they're, they're not going to offer that home plan, so. There originally were nine plans. Each one had three different elevations. It seemed like with that type of variety, it would be easy for them to, to meet the six pack rule, and so we didn't have that much concern. Now we know that they're gonna, they will only they'll, they're, they're, the neighborhood is kind of divided into two areas, so there's going to be one area where they offer six of the homes and another area where it's going to be no, sorry, five of the homes and another area that'll be three, used to be four, now it'll be three. So really, there's in, in parts of the community, there'll be three home plans and three elevations, which takes you down from 27 options to nine options. And then in looking at them, Chrissy and I thought, well, there isn't a lot of variation in the three options, so in the, in the different elevation choices, so. We asked that they be brought back here. We asked that they give us some color elevations to show you, and so Christie's put together something that shows the homes on the left is what was originally approved. The homes on the right on the screen are what they're proposing now. So you can see there's some details that have been removed. The cha, some changes in the, in the carriage lights and in the facade design, so. What we're recommending is since there's only three homes now and, and some of the elevations look fairly close that we wanted to also see some color variation. They actually have nine or I think 10 different color palettes that they could paint each home. And so the thinking was, well, if the, if the colors difference, then that combination of that plus, plus the the different elevations, because there might be a case where they'd have to put the same home and same elevations within the six pack, but at least if they had different color variations. We thought that that would meet the intent. The, the six pack rule says that they should be, I think I quoted in there and I'm not going to get it right just now off the top of my head, but it's just should be substantially different in in look and appearance. So so our recommendation is that you approve these with the additional condition that when they turn in their plot plans and they're for Christie to review and double check that they're meeting the six pack rule, that they also turn in the, the color that they're going to paint the house and then she can keep track of that and make sure that there's differentiation. So that's really our recommendation on this.
So you do recommend that you're okay with this plan? And they're getting rid of their two bedroom model? The 7511?
Yeah, they, they said that the, because they, they sell these homes in other communities and they're saying that one just is not selling well, so they're just not even going to offer it.
Steve, I have a question, not relating to what we're talking about right now, but maybe you're going to bring it up. Didn't they have some type of design where children can be picked up, like a bus stop, entryway or you know, not necessarily entryway, but we're safer for the kids to get on the bus.
There was a bull out. Was that on college or the other? Near the entrances to the community? Yeah. Yeah, that would have been picked up in the, in the improvement plans.
I thought so, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So basically, all of these are getting rid of the overhang above the garage. One of these are going all stucco on the front.
Yeah, and in talking to them, the, the, the two elements that they said that are, are driving these changes are the higher interest rates, so they're trying to lower the cost so they can keep the price of the homes down.
Yeah.
And the supply chain issues. So it's like if we have less, if we only have one type of door, then there's less likely to have a supply chain issue than if we have three types of doors, then that's basically the idea. And that would apply to a lot of the elements of the home. But see, then that goes back to what we, but we want them to look different. So, so do, doing this and having the requirement for the color differences we think is enough to, to be able to meet the intent of the rule.
So buyers can't choose their color? Or will they, will they be able to like choose their color or also choose any of this facade, like the stone work that goes in the front?
Well, be it, it appears what Lennar is going to do is they're going to pre-plot these homes so that they know that they're going to be able to at least have a chance to meet the six pack rule. And there may, they, they will probably allow them to pick a color. But if, if Christie says, well, these two homes are going to look, we, we may call them and say, hey, can you, can you choose a different one? But I don't know that that's going to happen, given that there's, you know, 12, 10 different color options. It, it may not happen.
So just for full disclosure, I do inspect these models in Hanford at the Lennar Track and I do that every day, so. I waited over and I was wondering if I should recuse myself from this, but I don't think, because it was told that possibly there's no financial gain for myself on this. I'm a government employee, nothing. I have nothing to gain from this vote. Then I would be okay, but I do have knowledge of the, each one of these models and it's, they look different, yeah. They're, they're trying to, I can see where they're saving costs is what they're trying to do. But they're not going completely just basic stucco across the front, you know what I mean? They are trying to, some of these actually look pretty good still. And staff approves.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, because we, Chris, we spent, we spent some time on it and, you know, we, at first we only got black and white versions and we were like, yeah, give us the color ones so we can be sure. And once we got the color ones, we felt better and you know, it's not like they're removing detail elements, they're just making changes.
Yeah, trying to save whatever they can.
Trying to save what they can without making it look very basic.
Yeah, and as for the color, I've noticed that the market is changing. They are probably going to build these without a buyer in mind, not like it was last year. So I doubt the buyer is going to choose the color unless it's, you know, they want a certain lot or something, so it would be staffed to make sure that this house across the street is not the exact same color and not the exact same model. So. Yeah.
Well, the development has been held up quite a bit. They should have been finished with this quite a long time ago, correct? And some financial situation.
I'm, I'm not going to speak for them, but I'll speak generally. When we, when you go through a change in the market like, like we did with the interest rate hike, it causes all the home builders to pause and relook at their portfolio and say do, do we still go on the same track or do we do something different? The, the home, the changes to the home plans was the something different for this one, but in the meantime, everything kind of paused for a little bit there, yeah.
So when they're cutting out 7511, the two bedroom, but it's a single story, will they replace that also with a single? I mean, just a single story? Just to kind of match it, so it's not like double, double, you know, two story, two story, single? You know what I'm saying? Are they going to replace the single story with another model that's a single story? Do you know?
I, I don't know.
Okay. No, that's all.
Yeah.
If commissioners, if you don't have any more comments? Okay, the time is 5:52. Let's open it up for the public. Public, do you have anything?
Hello, Phil Craven, Lennar. No comments, but I am here. Should you have any questions on the development that we can help you guys with? I know as, as it pertains to the timing of the project, we had hoped to break ground on homes in December, but because land development was not quite far enough along, the recent rains have slowed us down a bit. So right now, we're hoping for early March. We can get some base rock down and have combustible clearance to be able to start homes. Our plan with the Clementine series is to continue the entire portion of the project with that size home site with the three plans, so it'll be a single story with three elevations and then the two, two stories with the three elevations.
Okay, so 7511 will be switched out with another singles story?
So we've mapped out the entire community, trying to comply with the six pack rule, so we'll stagger the streets. And we tend to try to put as many single stories as we can while complying with the six pack rule. So they're just kind of blended in while still not overlapping, so we can comply.
Yeah.
Do we have anything online?
Thank you. Thank you. If that's all for public comment. Let's go ahead and move for a motion. Guys, have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Couch on, you know, there's some changes here, but when you when you're looking at it from the street, it, they're so minor that I don't have a problem with it. They, they still, they still look pretty good. So but he has any, if nobody has anything else to say, then I would move to adopt resolution number 202301. Approving the request for the modification of the master home plans for the major site plan review number 2020 dash 01 of subdivision map tract 848 in accordance with the findings and conditions in the resolution.
I'll second the motion. All right, with that, we'll take a roll call. Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner, how you going?
Aye.
Commissioner Couch.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, moving on to the next item. Number nine, director's report.
It's not joint. All right, the city council is going to have a study session about minimum lot size for single family homes in, on February 7th. It's driven by two things, one, one that was city initiated and one that's been brought to us by a developer, so. The city had gotten a grant from the state to look at ways to improve our zoning ordinance in order to encourage more housing development. So one of the things we want to do this year is evaluate our, our PUD ordinance and how that works right now. As you probably know, or maybe you don't know, but you just kind of, this is kind of how Lamoore's done it for a long time, is the, the minimum lot size by right is for a new subdivision is 7,000 square feet. That's a lot higher than most cities these days. So what we have to do is for every development, we require a planned unit development permit or a PUD. And then that allows them to tell us what lot size they want and what setbacks they want and things like that. And then we, that's approved as part of the package with MAP. A lot of other cities have a, a lower minimum lot size and standard setbacks. And they don't, therefore, they don't need a PUD and the developers are happy to comply with what the standards are, so. There's a, there's a benefit to that, especially with some changes to state law, which, which are starting to limit when cities can say no to housing. So if, if a project meets our standards, we're supposed to approve it. It kind of makes sense. If it meets your standards, why not? Why are you still going to deny it? So we, we, we wanted to do it to find ways to be more business friendly to, and then to also make sure that we're not running afoul of some of these new laws. The other reason is we've got a developer who proposed some, some very small lots, smaller than we've ever seen before in the more about less than 3,000 square feet. And so we weren't sure how to approach that as staff and Nathan decided, well, let's have a study session. We'll just talk about it. So you're invited to come to that and listen, make comments and we'll see what, what transpires. As part of that grant, we're also looking at a couple of, a few things to change in the zoning ordinance that we bring into you. We'll have, have a study session or two before we actually bring it to you as a, as a public hearing item to actually make the change. One of them is you probably know, we have a zone called the mixed use zone. And it's, it's in about five or six places in the community. We went back and looked of the, of the land that's not developed within that zone. There has been no development activity since the general plan was adopted in 2007. So that's 16 years of, of nothing. In my experience as a planner, when you have a zone like that where no, nothing is happening, it's probably time to look at that and maybe change that, that zone. So we're going to look at that and our plan is to bring to you options to change the mixed use zone either to a commercial zone or to a residential zone based on what makes sense, based on the surrounding community and also conversations with the property owners. We've already talked to one property owner, Mr. Olivera. Owns a number of property there at D and Bush. And got some, it was, it was good. We were, we, we were on the same page pretty quickly about what we might be able to do, so. So that'll be one thing. We're also going to look at the site plan review process that we have. Find ways to make that more streamlined. Just and looking at anything like, like the grant says, to make it easier to develop housing in Lamoore. So that'll be our big push this year. You got something too?
Just really quick. We, we received a temporary use permit application from Valley Children's Hospital. They'll be holding their 36th annual Kids Day fundraiser in Lamoore on March 7th, so keep an eye out for that. I'm working with them on the school sites. They would like to be in the intersections closest to the schools. So we're trying to work that out with them to make sure that doesn't cause an issue, but they can be located on the highest traffic areas. And I, let's see, March. So I should be able to have a little bit more information for you in February on that one. But just be aware, they're going to be in full force again. I think this is the first time since COVID that they're doing that. The other thing is flavor fusion raised lemonade. If you remember that, the, the cannabis. On Commerce and Enterprise, that's. um, it, on commerce and enterprise, that's, um, just about ready to be up and running, um, they're working on a parcel map, so, um, as soon as we have, you already approved the, uh, tentative parcel map and their final parcel map is just about ready to be recorded, and when that's done, then they'll start on phase two, which will be, uh, some commercial spaces, I think there's six spaces, and so that'll be an opportunity for businesses to come in and rent those, um, go in there, um. As far as the annexations, um, that we processed recently, it's kind of been between two thousand and twenty and now, um, we had the two, uh, south of town for cannabis, and then we had, uh, Lacy Ranch on Eighteenth and late, and Lacy Boulevard, and then we had, uh, track nine thirty five from Lennar on uh, eighteen and three quarters and Lacy, um, all of those are complete, they're now within city limits, and actually I have a map that I'll send each of you, and I sent it to city council, but I don't believe I sent it to you, so you can see the newly incorporated areas of the city and be aware of those, um, we did receive an email, um, an informal email from, uh, one of the representatives of Lennar Homes, um, letting us know that track nine thirty five, that they're, they're not gonna move forward with that. I didn't receive any formal notification or anything, but I'm assuming that that's the case, so then that's the one on eighteen and three quarters, that would be north of that track nine twenty that's already started developing there. But if anything changes, I'll make sure to let you know. Um, and then, uh, we so, um, we received, um, an application, uh, to, uh, construct a Maverick's convenience store, is anybody familiar with that? Um, apparently it's quite a big deal, and they, they offer, um, they'll have a drive-through restaurant in there, and they offer, I believe it's like and, uh, they'll, they'll offer, uh, RV disposal services and, and such, and so, um, that's kind of exciting, it's gonna be located, if it, if it moves forward, it'll be located on the northeast corner of Nineteenth and Iona. Um, in one of those mixed use property sites, and there's actually, um, Kevin King is the property owner there, and he's actually, they'll develop half of the property closest to Nineteenth Avenue, and then he's planning another development there, um, with the rest of the property, so right now, we're just in the CEQA environmental study stages, it's gonna be, um, that will probably take us two months, so this will, I think we expect to bring it to you in April. Um, but we'll keep you posted as that moves forward. Um, and then for my report for the city council, um, I will tell you that I've received, um, multiple um, inquiries, uh, regarding property within the city, and developers are looking at Lamore and they're serious, been here long enough, um, to know when, you know, an email is coming in and they're just fishing, um, but they seem to be interested, if I don't get back to them right away, they're wondering, you know, okay, so I need, and they've got specific questions. So, um, I'm really excited to see what's gonna happen in two thousand and twenty-three, hopefully they can be, bring quite a few projects to you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody, for the director's report, um. Moving on to item ten, commissioner reports, requests. Anything from the commission?
I just got one question, or Christie or Nathan, was, is city council, are they planning on moving there, meeting time? They already are, in fact, they're.
Yes, they, we, we switched a few months back.
Okay, I missed that then, thanks.
Um, I'd like to thank the nomination in the second for vice chair, I appreciate that, I didn't even think of that, and congratulations.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, everybody, that will do it, uh, meeting is adjourned.